And then some of them restrict the comments to the subject matter of the particular board or committee or city. So there are very reasonable provisions in these regulations. They're not draconian, but they do, I think, provide a legal framework that's supportable under the Open Meeting Act. And I think it gives at least a notice to members of the public who want to come in that there are going to be potentially restrictions. I think right now what you're doing is working, but I would be concerned if it got out of control, or if there was a challenge, or you were unable to move on and do your next business without really having a clear legal guideline to rely on. So that's my point of view as your general counsel is. You can create a regulation that doesn't change what you're doing, and does not change your openness and your accessibility, but provides you a tool to deal with complex situations, such as you had yesterday and you've had before, where you're just trying to deal with a massive amount of information and members of the public who want to participate, and yet recognizing that there are members of the public who may not be able to participate if all the time is taken by other folks. So that's sort of, some of it's summed up in here in the written item, but that's really, I think it fits with the purpose and spirit of the Open Meeting Act, otherwise it wouldn't be a clear invitation. Other agencies have done it. I've got, I mean, there are some, you know, PERS has one, the Bureau of State Mandates has a great one, you know, that allows a lot of discretion on the part of the chair, recognizing that the public may not want to speak. The universal time limit seems to be three minutes, but, you know, if I had to count them off, I think there's probably 11 or 12 out of the 18 say three minutes. One says five minutes. The others are, I think there's, LA is one minute, but I think that's because they have a lot of people talking down there. Yeah, that's LA, right? Another outlier. So anyway, I'm happy to answer questions. I think that gives you at least enough material for a discussion.
And Brian, before I have a list of folks who want to speak, I just want to reiterate. So several meetings ago, we kind of instituted a little bit more structured policy that we've been trying out for the last now three meetings, I believe, right?
Yes.
This is the third time that we've been, and so I just wanted to reiterate what we're doing now, just so that board members are reminded of what we're doing now. That's why we're reading the preface ahead of time. We're talking about the copyright. We're talking about minors. But I also just wanted to just reiterate, we're providing an opportunity after each agenda item when I remember to say it, which I did not on the last item, so. But after each item, and Harry did this yesterday as well, we allow for a 10-minute period for public comment, and that has to pertain to that particular item.
Yes.
And so if we had 10 people wanting to speak on that item, they would each have one minute to speak, correct?
Yes.
On those particular items.
Yes, and that's consistent with some of the benchmark regulations we looked at.
Right, so it's kind of a, if there's one person, they can speak to 10 minutes. It's sort of a math problem. However many people want to speak on the item, we divide it by 10, and they get that amount of time. Then, when we get to the end of the board meeting, or the investment committee meeting, there's a 30-minute comment period. That is, for anything that people want to talk about, it doesn't have to be related to an agenda item, correct?
Correct.
And then typically, in the last three items, or three meetings, our practice has been, the different groups, so in this case, we've had Unite Here, Fossil Free, Earth Guardians, we basically, you know, divide between, to be fair to each group, and divide between those groups, and then divide between how many speakers in each group, and try and, as much as we can in our best judgment and math skills, to give each of those people kind of a fair voice in the constraints of that 30-minute time period at the end of the meeting. We made accommodation yesterday to move that 30 minutes to the middle of the day. But in general, it's been at the end of the meeting, right? Is that, does that capture in general right now what we've been doing the last three meetings?
With two nuances. One is that you have a cap of three minutes, so if someone spoke up, if you had a 10-minute interval and there was only one speaker, you would allow that person to speak for three minutes, not the full 10.
Got it.
And then the other thing I would add, even though we don't expressly say it, is the open comment is related to the subject matter of the board, which is pretty broad, but I mean, it's, you know, if somebody wanted to stand up and talk about the presidential election, they'd have to somehow another.
Loosely related to calendars.
Link that to what it is that you do.
Great.
So, yeah.
Just like the presidential candidates do.
Yes, I think, I think that's, and I do think that fits within the spirit, first of all, your board policy manual, which allows the chair to administer the meetings for efficiency, and I do think it fits within the spirit of the current legal interpretation of the open meeting law.
Great. And again, that was all at the discretion of, I mean, that's how we've been doing it, but then there's the discretion of the chair as well, right? So within the, okay, let me take some folks. Sure, yeah, let me just get you in there. Let me see if I can do this.
You should be able to click her name and then click the space.
Can I do, speak now?
Yeah, speak now.
Speak now. Give me just one second. There you go, Betty.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I just want to be clear about what the discussion here is about. And I guess I was oriented to think, and you just went through kind of some of the steps we've been taking, so, and I think as we go into each of the elements, we'll probably revisit those, but this idea here, Brian, that we're gonna actually, we have the opportunity to start a rulemaking process to kind of memorialize some of these elements so that we have a framework, we can provide flexibility or discretion to the chair, we can, so, just to kind of have a more formalized kind of framework, is that what we're kind of pursuing?
That's part of the, that's part of the discussion, and so I think that's one of the first decisions for you to make, is whether or not you want staff to start looking at putting this together in a more concrete manner and bringing it back to you, and at least, not making a decision today, but making a decision in the future whether you want to pursue the actual rulemaking process.
Okay, all right.
Does that make sense, as a regulation?
Yeah.
To kind of have a bit more of a basis behind why we.
No, and I'm all for that. I just didn't know, because we were kind of focused on the more granular, whether, and I don't know, we need to focus on that if we're looking at a rule. I think the rule probably should be more flexible, and so.
Sure.
I just was confused about where we were headed, so I'll.
Okay, okay.
I'll have further questions later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Dana.
So I have a couple of questions and maybe a couple of comments. Brian, when you were talking about the other entities that you surveyed, did any of them limit the number of speakers per subject?
No, they were all time.
All time based?
All time based. So there were some limitations on the amount of times that someone could speak, so I did see some where a person could speak on any agenda item for three minutes, but they couldn't speak for more than nine minutes during the entire meeting. I found those in the, Sheila found those in city councils, so you can just imagine that there are frequent flyers perhaps that they're trying to address. But no, I didn't see any, anything about the number.
Okay. And I know that there was confusion yesterday, well, let me be, I'm going to try to be tactful. Some of it might have been intentional. But if, I'm wondering how we can structure a public comment on items not on the agenda within that 30-minute time, if that's what we decide to do, that allows people to be better prepared when they come. Because right now, how much time they get depends on how much, how many groups are there to speak, because it's not delineated between how many people are here to speak, it's between how many groups are here to speak, or by subject matter. So we could actually have one group speak for 30 minutes, or we could have 10 groups, and then everybody's time is dramatically shortened, except if we're going to limit it to three minutes, everybody's going to get three minutes. Or not everybody, but the speakers that get to go first get three minutes. So I think it can be really confusing, so I don't know if there's a way to construct it that, because it's, it has to be pertinent to the system, if we can limit it by subject. So like I'm thinking, so we had fossil, the divestiture of fossil fuels had, and Diane, you're out there somewhere, aren't you? We had five groups?
At least four.
So we had four groups, and then we had Unite Here, so we had five groups total. And you, well, but they were here for Unite Here, that subject.
Correct.
Oh, six groups, two subjects. So how difficult, I know you had a hell of a time yesterday, so.
Trying to figure out how to determine how many minutes each, everybody got to speak. How did you do that yesterday?
Yesterday, what we did was, Diane Stanton, External Affairs, yesterday what we did was we divided it by topic. So we collected speaker request forms. Due to the late, the lateness of some of our folks, and that was due to transportation, it wasn't intentional by any stretch of the imagination, we did not have speaker request forms for the youth. And so that list was handed to us in real time, in handwriting. So we had to do some quick, just typing to make it a little bit more legible and a little bit more easy to manage. But understanding that we had two very different topics yesterday, that was how the time was divided, based on the information we had.
So we can play with some subject area.
Right. Yesterday, the math was actually not that complicated. We had two groups, 10 minutes, five minutes, you could have, 20 minutes, I'm sorry, you could have done 10 each, but because one group was bigger, we just did a little tweak there, so it was 18-12.
And I guess, what I'm trying to get away from is that people have a reasonable expectation of what they can expect when they get here, I guess.
Right.
So if we had a limit by subject, as well as by speaker, that would allow them to figure out, there's a whole bunch of us here, and we're all going to talk about this, let's figure out it, and we only have this much time, let's figure out who's going to do it. Because the more groups you have, the less time then you have to speak, people are going to come with a, maybe an unfair expectation that maybe nobody's going to show up, but we've got all 30 minutes.
Well, I think it's important to upfront disclose the limitation to the groups, so they appreciate that. I think yesterday there was an unrealistic expectation. They owned the 30 minutes, the larger group.
So our staff reaches out, so.
Yeah.
No, I understand, I understand that, but I mean.
So I think if you say that it's by topic, and it's possible that there could be a variety of issues, and your time may not be as much as you think, so I think, you know, we're not, I mean, mostly historically, we've never had, this is a bit of a new thing, the group approach to things.
Right.
Normally, it's people coming with their singular kind of commentary.
Yeah.
So it's a bit of a different trend. I don't know if it'll be with us always, but I don't think we're far off, to be honest with you. People, I think, you know, they want something, but then if you have a good rationale, you're consistent with it, you articulate it.
But I think if we delineate that we're going to do it by subject and not by group.
Yeah.
That makes a huge difference.
Yeah, you don't want clever calculations around attendance.
Exactly.
That's the one thing we don't want to encourage.
Yeah.
You know, well, if they're going to bring five, I'm bringing seven, you know.
Right, gaming the system.
We don't want competitive participation.
Exactly.
Right.
To that.
Yeah.
Topic. We've already had some gaming by some of our groups, so I think that we need to be, I think we need to be pretty strict in how far afield we allow some of our speakers to go on the agenda items. They need to speak to what the agenda item actually is, not what their, I don't want to say agenda, but what their passion is, and trying to wrap it into something that's pretty, yeah, yeah. I'm trying to be really, I'm trying to be chaffal.
There are some provisions, and I'm sorry if I interrupted you.
No, you're fine.
There are some provisions that I've seen where boards have requested that speakers provide prior notice of what they want to speak about. There's a, there's at least, they also provide an opportunity, again, because we're talking about public access, they also provide an opportunity if a person has not had an, has not participated in the prior notice process, that they can, they can do it at the time of the meeting. But there is, so that's part of at least one regulation that I looked at, was to ask, not just sign up here, but people who wish to come and be recognized to sort of register ahead of time what it is that they want to speak about. And so, and that's legally supportable if you wanted to do that. So one of the things that you, you could ask staff to develop for you is, you know, menu of these choices that you want to make as you start, as you start getting deeper.
I think that would be very beneficial for the chair, who's going to have to make that call. Then, is there any benefit to, I'm all forgiving the chair the discretion, but, and I don't want this to sound like we're going to be worried about a chair making a call, but is there any benefit to having, and I think as a chair, as you're running a meeting, you ask for consensus of the committee that you're chairing. Would there be any value of including something like that, so it's not just the chair's decision, but by asking if there's consent of the committee, then the committee has the chair's back?
Yeah, we've seen, we've seen that, that is one of the options. So it has the, the regulation will have the flavor of, again, setting out, you know, the minimum time, everybody shall have three minutes, if that's where you go, subject to the discretion of the chair, and approval by the governing body.
All right. And then, I have one last thing.
Go ahead, go ahead.
When we state at the start of a meeting that each speaker, that each agenda item, there's a 10-minute public comment period, I think we should say that if there are speakers, they may speak up to 10 minutes, subject to the three-minute.
Or three minutes.
It's, because when it just says there will be a 10-minute public comment period, it almost sounds like we're going to do an agenda, we're going to stop for 10 minutes for whoever decides they want to speak, kind of like when we do the regulations hearings, the hearing's going to be open for an hour, we have to sit there for an hour, so I think that if somehow we word that so it's a little bit more clear, I think that that would help. And I think that we only need to say this at the beginning of a meeting. I don't think we need to say it on every single agenda item, that there will now be up to 10 minutes for somebody to speak.
You certainly wouldn't have to if you had a regulation.
Pardon?
You certainly wouldn't have to if you had a regulation.
I mean, make it, if people are here to speak, they're going to figure out really quickly, we ought to only have to say it once. All right, thanks.
You good, Dana?
Yep, I got all my issues out.
So I've got a line of people, Brian, and I guess what I want to get back to is, I don't want to sort of get, we're getting a little bit into all the details, I think I want staff to help us with that. So I guess I want to back us up to the bigger picture, which is your original question was, does the board think we should pursue a regulation or not, which is the big picture? I think all the different numbers and minutes and how it's constructed is part of your role to kind of come back to us and give us options. We can certainly talk about that today, but I don't want to get too far in the weeds, because I think the question the board faces is really, you know, do we think a reg is sort of appropriate at this point, given the nature of our, where our system is at right now?
I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay.
I totally misunderstood the.
Yeah, that's okay.
What it was you were asking us to do.
It's all good.
I thought you wanted us to give them some direction, I was trying to give them some direction.
That's okay, and I think we can maybe get there, but I think we should answer the first question, which is, do we want to pursue a regulation or not? Which I think is kind of what Betty was, but anyway, it's all good.
We can do a things up.
No worse. Frank?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a quick, well, maybe two questions and a quick comment. It deals with the issue of accommodation of speakers. So I want to be clear that if I understood you correctly, the chair at this juncture, with or without a regulation, does have, the chair by themselves, or by consensus, the committee, they do have the ability to accommodate the sequence or the public comment period if they so wishes. Is that correct?
That's correct. Under your board policy manual, your, the chair has that ability to run the efficient meeting and make those decisions.
Okay. So a quick comment on that, just that we clear, and the treasure supports accommodation of public speakers. If tomorrow we had the president, or the chancellor of Germany in town only at 11:00 that wants to address this body, we would, the treasure favors an accommodation for the chancellor or a particular speaker. You know, she, in her past experience serving on numerous boards, it's pretty common to accommodate speakers for whatever reasons, you know, they may have, at the discretion of the chair.
And we've had Reverend Al Sharpton come and speak at our appeals committee, because that was the.
Yeah, we got presidents.
That was on schedule.
On schedule, even, wow. The other, the other quick question, and I'm not sure if the rulemaking process, if that's what the body decides, would address the issue of minors, their live stream, their recording portion, would that, is that a separate discussion, or is that part of that, or could be part of that process? I just wanted clarity on that subject.
So, this is the lawyer's response. We're talking about Bagley Keene Open Meeting Act. Bagley Keene does not require live streaming or recording the meetings that you have. The issue dealing with minors is solely related to live streaming and the storage of recordings that include their images and their names. So right now, this board is, allows speakers of any age to come in and address this board under Bagley Keene, consistent with the open meeting law. So you heard from many youngsters yesterday who identified themselves as 10 or 11 years old, and there was no, there was no restriction on them not being allowed to speak. The restrictions we're talking about are really on the webcast, and they're really on the recording. And in my mind, again, this is the lawyer's response, in my mind, that's outside of the rulemaking under the Open Meeting Act. That really has to do with whether or not you have a privacy policy. It's governed by, and I'm happy to discuss it, I mean, it's governed by a lot of different considerations. Yesterday, as an example, there was an 11-year-old who was up there with a piece of painter's tape across her face. We know her name. She announced her name. Potentially, if you did not restrict that, you would have a video of that young lady on your website forever. That is, under COPA, that's personally identifiable information, just an image, you don't even have to have the name anymore. So that's a much deeper discussion, it has a much more, a broader consideration. We have a lot of legal moving towards privacy, the right to be forgotten. If that young lady, and I don't mean to pick on her, she was eloquent, but if that young lady five years from now wanted her image off of our website, we don't have the technology to do that. We don't pixelate people, we don't have it divided up. And if the parents gave permission, the parents should have the right to be forgotten. They, their permission should be able to limit the use of that, of that image. And I think the way, you know, if we look at California law, it's moving towards the right to be forgotten. You look at the GDPR, so we have to be very cognizant of the fact that we can't do those types of things, and we need to be deliberate. There is an entire group in our organization that is looking at this issue, so we are carefully considering how we can balance the desire of our young people to address the board and to have a public forum, and their rights versus our responsibility. So we have some very qualified people. Braden Payton, one of the lawyers that is in my organization, is sitting back here, is a certified information privacy professional, is looking at this, looking at a privacy policy. So the discussion on that is not, is not over. We're hoping we can come back to make a recommendation to you on a privacy policy. But again, from the lawyer's standpoint, that is not related to the Open Meeting Act. The Open Meeting Act says nothing about the webcast. The webcast is, pardon your expression, is a self-inflicted wound, so we have to figure out how we're going to address it. See, I wasn't pointing any fingers, but, and it's.
It's all Dana's fault? Is that what we're saying?
It fits, it fits your dedication to transparency. It is a wonderful thing. This is just a new subject for us, and so we are, we're being very deliberate on it, and we understand the tensions.
Not to disagree with the general counsel, but the one place where the privacy issue, privacy of minors does dovetail with whatever, however we handle public comment, is to the extent we aren't going to broadcast, then we need a way to, just for us to administer it effectively, we need a way to separate the minors and have them at a certain time so we can do what we need to do to turn off the feed.
I'm just scared of public comments.
That's not a disagreement.
I see you, Pat.
I agree.
Hang on one second, Frank. I see you, Pat, I see you, John. I'm going to make sure, at the end of this item, I am going to mention public comment. I would hate to have you sitting, standing that whole time, Pat, and I still got board members in the line, so I make sure to, the board will make sure to remind me to come back to that, so go ahead, Frank.
One last comment, Madam Chair, thank you. Briefly, that goes to the core of the question, the treasure supports a rulemaking process, which will be, will give clarity to the process, and we would all benefit from that process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you, Frank. Harry?
Thanks, thank you, Madam Chair, Sharon. I too, first of all, the write-up, I think, is excellent. I think it does a terrific job in terms of what we're being asked to do. It gives some reference to court rulings, it balances the issues of, we are a public body, and the public's right to speak and address us versus the right of this body to conduct its work. So it's framed perfectly, it gives us court, gives us a legal setting. So I too support the direction to staff to create some regulations, help us through this regulation process. As I understand it, adopting regulations gives us greater support to, should someone ever question whether or not we're providing an opportune time for the public to address us. So I think we should do that, I think that's pretty straightforward. As it relates to some of the broader details, I think the 30 minutes seems to be working properly, and I like the idea of those public comments at the, this 30-minute window and how it's divided up, the 18-12, never tell them how we came up with the real 18-12, Jack, 20-10, 18-12, but, so 30 minutes, and then the time in between the, when items specifically to an item on the agenda, I support that. I will, I think leaving to the discretion of the chair is appropriate. I think we have to be flexible around accommodations in the event that, we, I think some flexibility is appropriate, I think the treasurer's office makes a, you know, we would, we would make accommodations for a dignitary to be in town, and, but I think we have to use it sparingly.
It depends.
Sparingly, sparingly. And as, on the issue of videotaping of the minors, I think, Brian, you're spot on, I mean. Live streaming of minors versus how that video could be used either against those minors, or against this institution, my view is to err on the side of caution and protect their anonymity, they're young children, they're kids. And, but how do we do that? That's not for me to decide, but the fundamental question, the safety of children versus children from Berkeley and Oakland that don't mind, there are a lot of families and parents and, who don't want their kids videotaped, and don't want their images broadcast across the world for it to be used, however, someone may want to use it today or into the future. So if there's a way to get that right, let us know, but, you know, I'm from Santa Monica, and I'm, you know, I, you know, not, I, I'm not some, like, you know, my, but when it comes to the safety of children, and the images of children, and how they can be used and misused and abused, and used against us or used against them, I will always err on the side of safety and protecting them. And as the adults, protecting them, we're making that decision, not putting them on live stream, even though that, oh, we want to be live stream, they can videotape and they can blast their stuff out all over the world, better than we can. If that's what they choose to do, they've done it. We didn't give, we weren't the enabler. So continue to have the team look at it, and then advise us balancing those issues. So continue to have the team look at it and then advise us balancing those issues.
Important sort of exclamation point to that, Harry, I appreciate, I really appreciate those comments. But Bagley Keen does specifically allow a public, a member of the public to videotape the proceedings and there's not, and we'll just, we'll just update videotape to webstream or whatever the technology is and actually provides it, there can't be interference with that. So it, it, it specifically recognizes exactly what those young folks are doing. They can create their own video records if they want. And there's nothing, there's nothing prohibiting that. This really, this discussion really relates to your creating a video record and storing it. So I think that's important to remember, we, we have records of all of our meetings going back, I don't know, 10 years, further than that, and they're all out there for anybody to watch. So this is, I, I appreciate the comments. And I really want to make sure, because it's a much harder subject, that at least my advice to you is to separate the two, to deal with your public comment regulation, the idea of public comment, and let us continue to work on the privacy issue and, and come back and report to you on that and where we are, because we understand, at least I, I understand the sentiment of the board and the legal constraints. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, thank you for that. Betty.
Thanks, Sharon. I want to align myself with Harry with respect to the issue about minors. Speaking before us. And appreciate, Brian, your continued work on looking at that as a separate issue with all the considerations that have been articulated to date on that. I. Very much support beginning the rulemaking process here to govern public comment. I think sometimes when we hear the word rulemaking, it seems like it's a hammer, but in fact, it's a tool. And it really can help set expectations with respect to any member of the public coming in and knowing how they're going to be treated. Bagley Keen, I mean, governs a lot of different things. Certainly in terms of how our meetings are noticed, that we provide an agenda, that we allow participation in open meetings, and so I think. This is exactly kind of the, the framework that we ought to be looking at. I guess what I would say with respect to the time. The time allotments. I, I want to try to build in as much flexibility to those as possible. The chair and, and the committees and the board here have business to conduct. And I think each meeting is going to be different. I think we can set kind of a, a floor of an expectation that that it can be certainly revised as we assess kind of what is happening in real time. And then I also. I don't think it goes into the, the rule that we get a lot of. Concerns expressed in writing. And I would like to have them actually put into the record and recognize where they've come from and what the, that we received it. And to also maybe even talk about, just really briefly describing a letter in support of or, you know, but, but I think that could help. I mean, there are a lot of members of the public who can't be here. And so I don't want to ignore, you know, kind of that segment of the public. And then I think Dana, I took a little bit of, I had a little reaction about kind of the complexity of a layer of getting consensus from the committee or the board on the chair's discretion. And this goes back to, I think, the trust issue that we talked about yesterday. And I really, I mean, look, this is, I think we've had phenomenal chairs of this board and of our committees. And I think why this works so well is because there is a lot of trust among ourselves. And I think as a chair, we know kind of how to read each of the members of your committee or board, and so I don't have any issue with kind of just delegating that to the chair, because if we start having that added layer, it's going to all fall apart. I mean, it's just, we, we don't need it.
It's hard when you have to make.
I think the idea that we all have this, we subscribe to the spirit of Bagley Keen that we want to have, we invite public participation, but that we still have to do the people's business, and so leaving that to the chair's discretion, I would be comfortable with. But I think with respect to kind of the expectations, because that's what I think we're really talking about, is for, you know, new groups, new participants, new members of the public who are coming in, what can we expect? And so I think Sharon, at the outset, what you stated in terms of, you know, what the time allotments might be, we might be able to put some expectation in writing on our agendas, but these are all tools for how to manage a meeting. And so I hope that when we talk about the items, and Brian, you laid out a couple of items, so I talked about discretion on the timelines, seating time, I mean, I think we still ought to allow for that. I mean, I don't want to hear the same comment within the 10 minute period from 10 people or three people. I am very much in favor of speaker request forms. I mean, that is the most important management tool for a chair. And so we have to, I think, institute those, I know they've been helpful to me in other capacities, and, and it just puts a little bit of a formality with the speakers who come in to know that, okay, they're, this is, they're, they're part of this process. And so anyway, I, I very much appreciate this coming up before us. I think the worst thing we can do is to kind of have just arbitrary decisions made from meeting to meeting, and so to the extent that we can kind of formalize expectations, I think would be great.
Great, thanks, Betty. I've got a cue and I also have public, so I just, in, in fairness to our, you know, our time allotment, I just, we, we're a little over our time already, we have 30 minutes allotted for this item, so we'll continue the conversation at the pleasure of the board. We've got lots of people that want to chime in, but I just wanted to let you know that we're, we're running over time, so if we can just be succinct, that'd be great. Bill.
Well. I, you know, I'll make it short. I, I agree with a reg being developed, number one. Number two, I think there, having appeared before a, a number of public bodies, myself, representing clients in an approval process. And having people oppose or support that process. I've seen the written forms being, you know, you know, provided to the chair of that, that body being very helpful, number one. Number two, you know, the repetition of speakers speaking on the same topic and saying the same thing, to the extent that we can limit that and have them just in writing, acknowledge, we can, at the end of public comment, if we can acknowledge in, you know, that they've submitted something in writing, their position has been, and these are the people whose positions are, you know, against fossil fuel investing. They have, they have a, they've had meaningful access. You know, their point of view has been heard. So I mean, to the extent that we can use the items that Betty has suggested, I think would be very helpful, I think, you know, and consider that. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
That's great, thank you, Bill. Gail.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just really briefly in terms of the regulation, which I support. If we could just include once there's a decision made that the entire board follows that, I do think that's really important, and I would love to see in the regulation if we could include something about the pre-meetings and how those then translate into the board meeting. I was a little bit concerned to hear from the folks yesterday about their previous meeting and just to make sure that, that as a board, we're speaking in one voice and that it's clear to the members of the public that it's the board's policy and that includes all of us up here, because I do think, and I think you both did an incredible job yesterday, but I think it can be a little bit awkward to, to be managing your board and managing the public and just to somehow in the regulation make it clear that this is on behalf of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Dana.
So I, I totally understand, and, and, and the comment about the, the consent of the board was just as much to have the person's back that's making the decision so that the speakers know that everybody agrees with what they might be limiting, but I'm, I, that's not a sort of, I mean, that's fine.
I don't want the chair to become a target for the public who's not happy with the decision that gets made and, because we're letting, I mean, and maybe that's implicit and it could be misconstrued all sorts of ways, although it can also be used in a wayward chair as well, I get that. Nobody's talked about space yet. And there were a lot of people really uncomfortable yesterday, so somehow in the regs, we can limit the public to be in the, in the public area of the boardroom. I think that a lot of people on the dais and, and in all fairness to the speakers and that we're having listen to. That they be limited to the public area of the room.
I think whether that's something that goes in the regs or not, we, that was one of the notes we took yesterday and we will be having a debrief to, and, you know, we saw the people kind of closing in back here and, and blocking the space that you all need if you need to exit the dais.
Also bringing things up that we don't know, you know, what's in that stuffed animal. Things like that.
So Harry and I sent an email, if you haven't checked your email yet.
Public to public.
Harry and I sent an email out last night, so if you haven't read it yet, but it was about that particular issue, and we asked staff to basically come up with some ideas to, to create a little bit more of a, kind of a safety zone for the dais. Again, this is kind of new for us, but we've asked Jack and staff, and if you, if board members have input, they want to give Jack, just pop them an email in response to that email, but we acknowledge that yesterday was definitely. Yeah, great, perfect, thank you. So thank you for raising that, Dana, I think that, that is a concern. Nora.
So I, I will support the guidelines, regulations, I just want us to be very mindful of, of the concept of, in the spirit of civic engagement, right? I have been very, and I will talk about me, I have been very engaged in a lot of different topics throughout the 25 years of my advocacy. And when I take time to go places to advocate because something really matters to me, I really appreciated when the people who are in the dais will take some time. To make me, make those adjustments to, so that I may be heard, because it may be something that is extremely important and critical to me. And that's how sometimes things change, because we may have one idea of something and advocates and folks who do, who do this work as issue advocacy may have a very different perspective that could actually, you know, change our mind or not, and there's different mediums of people being able to share information, but I want us to make sure that we're open to that, because I think it's really important, especially in this country right now, where we have very limited civic engagement and we're seeing that people don't trust government and don't believe that government works for them. So I want us to be very mindful of that, I don't think anybody here doesn't feel that way, but I want to make sure we, we, we acknowledge it. The other part of it is, I think, I take my, my role as a member of the CalSTRS board really seriously as well as as an elected official, and so I will continue to meet with constituent groups, whether it's Unite Here or the teachers, whoever they are, because I think it's my responsibility to do that. But I think when we have a process like the one we talked about yesterday, you know, I think that, I know that I never promise anything, I listen to people and I always share that information back to the right folks, and I, and I want to make sure that we have that flexibility to do that, I don't think anybody has said that, we don't, I just want to make sure that we continue to do that, because for me, that's a really important piece of what my, my role and my responsibility is as a fiduciary and, and all of that. And then last but not least, I, I would say, for all of us, we need to take a step back and think about sort of how communications and really social media and the world has changed around us. Young people are very active now, and thank God that they are, because they have very different perspectives. I think that sometimes as adults, we think we have all the answers to things. Young people are really, really smart, I don't, I'm not saying anybody here is saying that they're not, but I, I, I want us to be very conscious of that. And the rules that have been created are rules that are very archaic rules that may or may not have to change. I'm not saying let's change the privacy rules, I'm not saying anybody here is wrong, I'm just saying let's take a step back, because the world has changed. We have a young woman in the other side of the world who actually is talking about green issues and that nobody would have talked about before if it wasn't for her voice. And so let's be very mindful of that, we want to be conscious of young people's privacy and their rights, but they're also humans and they also have rights and they also should be able to speak up and if, if, you know, let, let's figure out how we, we, we move with the times, because I think sometimes we are, we are not them, and what we did at their age is very different with what they're doing at their age now, and, you know, God bless them for that, because I think that we, the world is in good hands because, because of them and not most of us. And I mean that from a very good space. So I just wanted to add that, and I will support the regulation, but I wanted to add that as well, thank you.
I appreciate that, and Nora, I just want to comment before I take your last comment, Karen, that when you talk about process, we, you know, we talked with Amy, Harry and I talked with Amy this morning, and I think at our offsite, there'll be opportunities for us, because we're always trying to figure out how to be a better board, right? We want to, we want to learn, we want to grow, we want to get stronger, we want to make sure that every individual on this board has a unique relationship with stakeholders and, and so by no means do we want to diminish that, but I think it is kind of, to Gail's point about figuring out how we do that and then have a process for how that information comes back so that we can speak as, as one voice as a board when we make decisions. And I think that's, I think we have some work to do on that, but we're going to, we're going to do that work, so I appreciate that, thank you. Karen.
I just want to echo Nora, Betty, Dana, and the others on the board too, that I do support the, the writing of the regulations for one. And then a couple of comments. I noticed that some of the, in prior communication with, to, to us, you talked about when the public can speak on a particular item, and sometimes the public can speak before the, the vote of an item, or sometimes it's after.
It's, Bagley Keen is it's before the vote, every time.
Okay, but, but there was some indication where that wasn't always true, I thought. Okay.
Yes, that was part of a, a discussion that.
Right.
The, the spirit of, the letter of Bagley Keen says before, during an item, the consideration of an item.
Okay.
And the way this board has historically operated was to recognize anyone who wanted to speak during the item. But then if no one was standing up to say, and is there anyone from the public, and it was after the vote, and so we thought, okay, as we're doing this, let's just get ourselves in line with the, with the letter of the law, because you've always been in line with the spirit.
Okay.
So that was, that was part of the discussion.
And then just one last item, as far as, I know that, Jack, you send out in. I notices or announcements that a meeting is coming up. In that notice, can something be indicated in there about the policy, about public, public comment period time? Is that an appropriate time to do that, or is that common?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at the, the language we use, I, I think that it's a great opportunity to reinforce it. Yeah, in plain English.
Okay. I think that's great.
Thank you for that.
Good. That is the end of our board discussion, I have some thoughts, but I want to defer to our public, I know there's a couple of folks from the public, and then I will hopefully wrap it up for us, Brian, and give you direct feedback. John.
Hi, John Anderson, CTA representative, liaison to CalSTRS board. Just a couple of thoughts about the, the props and the signage, wondering if you might want to look into regulations related to those. They could be security issues, they could also be used for misleading information if pictures, the private pictures are taken and videos are taken with signage around any of the board members or any of people sitting in the audience or myself, could be a misleading image that's put out into the public from those items. And so I think that's something worthy at least to look into. And with that said, just, you know, First Amendment rights are very, very important and signage and props are part of that, but there are limitations to all our rights and freedoms, so I don't think it's bad to put some, like I say, limitations or possible regs on, on the signage and props. I'm going to keep it short and leave it at that.
Great, thank you, John, appreciate your input. Pat, are you still, all right, there she is.
You, you can be grateful, I'm certainly not going to take 30 minutes. Anyway, my thought was, particularly with, with the schoolchildren, why don't you ask them to put it in writing and, and submit that to you and then have their limited time for conversation? I think that would be both a good exercise for them and would give them a feeling that they have participated personally in some way to you, okay?
Thank you, Pat, you can certainly make that suggestion, whether it will be followed is, yeah, this is what I'm learning here, but, yeah, no, I appreciate that, Pat, absolutely. So Brian, there are a couple of things that I heard, so I just want to make sure we're clear on giving you direction. So I'm hearing a clear consensus from the board that we want us, we want you to pursue some kind of regulation to give us some sense of a, kind of a process in place for our public comment moving forward. So. And I think kind of hearing all the different board members and what they're saying, I think, I think our goal is just to have, you know, some order, fairness, consistency, being clear on expectations, so we want to be open to the public, and so when the public comes in, it's clear, sort of, you know, what the process is, so they're not surprised and, but that they're given, you know, sort of a process so that there's less ambiguity and more consistency. I think we have sort of been inconsistent in the past, I think the last three meetings, we've been more consistent, and I think that's helped us. And then certainly communicating out to those stakeholders and. Um, and then certainly communicating out to those stakeholders and, and constituent groups what the process is, once we have it in place will be key so that those expectations are set. Um, I heard an information request from, from Controller Yi about, um, perhaps maybe Diane and the, and her, her crew with the, um, the written communication. I think that was a really good, um, thought to, to kind of figure out how we can get, um, different modalities, I guess, of communication from stakeholders. I'll leave it to you guys to think about that.
And it's come up before. The assumption it goes on the record, you know, that phrase? And, and I'm not, I think we do need to look at that actually a little more closely. I, I like that a lot. It, it isn't just about this, but over the time we've had that, people submitting multiple page documents and where do they get tracked, where do they get kept? Yeah.
So, do you have something to add to that? Okay. Dana?
So I, I, this is something that Brian and I kind of talked about last night. I mean, some of these kids are coming up, they're giving us their full name, they're giving us that where they're going to school. And if we're not going to be broadcasting it, it's not as big as an issue, but I mean, the fact they're giving out identifying information is probably not a really good idea. If we're going to take written, and I think as a teacher, I think having them write some stuff is a really good idea. But there shouldn't be anything in it identifying who they are, where they go, I mean, other than maybe a first name or initials or whatever it is, because once it goes into our record, then it becomes public domain, correct? Or subject to a, a PRA? So I think that o- opens up a whole nother level of, um, security and safety for the students if they're going to be submitting stuff. So just, let's think about that as if we're going to have written stuff.
That lends itself more though to a disclosure. So it does lend itself to items that are submitted will be public and names will be public. So, so I, we will look at that, but unlike the video, it does lend itself more to a pre-disclosure. And I have seen language, uh, addressing the, the point that, that Betty made. It also includes language that you have addressed, it says, and none of those comments will, none of those written comments will be read aloud at the meeting. And I know you've wrestled with that. So it is something that would potentially provide a, an additional benefit for you as well. So we will look at that.
Thank you. Thanks, Dana. So, so Brian, back to, so you've heard us say, we want you to pursue regulation. You can come back in November with potential draft. Is that enough time to?
Well, we've done a lot. It's enough time.
I know you've done some work already.
Yeah, actually, you, we didn't, because we're staff and you're the board, we didn't want to presume to come forward at this point and have you have to make a choice. So that's the direction that we needed. I heard a lot and we've, we've, you know, we've got a lot of notes. So I think what, if, if it's all right with you, what we would come back with is perhaps a shell of a regulation and then a menu of choices that address the various needs. Because if we took all the input of all the brilliant people up on this dais, we would have a six-page regulation. And I think you may, and then there are a couple of things that I, I might recommend. So I think as we start to construct it, maybe we could start more, that part of the discussion is, okay, this is what that would look like that we really want that in. And so I think that's what we would like to bring back in November for you.
And I would, I would just say it feels like an art more than a science because I think about our conversation about accommodating and I think, I, I, I just want to be careful that we treat everyone fairly. So just because we have a dignitary, to me, it's like, well, an 11-year-old kid has the same gravitas, right? So figuring out how to balance that, how, how do we accommodate, when do we accommodate, um, consistency on how we treat everyone regardless of, you know, age or status or things like that. That part I think will just, I would hope we could be up to the discretion of our, you know, board to try and make those decisions because of course we want to accommodate on the one hand. On the other hand, I just, I feel a bit kind of, I, I just want to be as consistent as possible so that people can't go back and go, well, why did these people get this special treatment and we didn't get that special treatment? I just, I think I'd love to just be as consistent as possible in a perfect world, which I know we don't live in. So, um, so is that enough direction for you, Brian, on the regulation? There were a couple of other things I wanted to mention, but is that enough direction for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I believe so.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then just a couple of other things, just to make sure we follow up on, um, the security piece, you know, we, we sent the email out, please respond, Jack. Staff's going to come back with us with ideas on security. Um, and I appreciate the feedback from John on signage. I thought that's interesting. Um, and then again, we're going to talk more about process as a board, how we make decisions, how we respond to stakeholder input, um, coming up in the October meeting, so, offsite. So, anything else you need from us, Brian?
No, thank you very much.
Harry, do you want to? And then I'm going to take a five-minute break after this, so go ahead, Harry.
So I, I received a lot of notes the last couple of days, but one I just read, if Grant or Diane just could communicate back to the kids that I wasn't on the dais drinking a glass of red wine.